Good evening. I'd like to open the public hearing on comments for the district-wide safety plan. The notice was, the legal ad was placed in two local newspapers in June. The document has been on the district's website for over 30 days. So I'm opening up to public comments. Does the board have any comments or questions about the safety plan?
I do understand, just you have some changes, a few changes?
Want me to do it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, "The district's security consultant, Altaris, recommended changes and additions to the plan so that it is in compliance with the most up-to-date requirements and recommendations of the New York State Education Department. After the approval by the board, the document will be sent to the state as well as shared with the local county and state police authorities." The additions and updates were, one, personnel updates, two, a cybersecurity section, a bus accident procedure section, and ensuring protocols for responding to a declared state of disaster emergency involving a communicable disease are consistent with the provisions of the labor law. The committee has administrators, teachers, clinical staff, members of the transportation department, and parents are on the committee. So I'm asking for public comments. Should we wait? Should we not wait? Okay, hearing no comments, I'm going to close the public hearing on the district-wide safety plan. So I would like to convene the business meeting for, wait a minute, what's the name?
August 11th.
August 11th, I was gonna say.
I know, what page is it?
April, March of the day, oh my God. Let's stand for the pledge. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Okay, the treasures report for June 2022 is available in the business office. This is the period of public comment, but there's no public here tonight. They're very quiet tonight. We're gonna move right into the consent agenda.
Resolved to approve consent agenda items two through 22 are presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? Ms. Plena, could you summarize the 22?
Yes. It includes what is for previous meetings, the CSCA placement. It approves the 2022-23 substitute listing. It approves substitute cleaners that were utilized over the summer. There are additions to the 2022 ESY program staff to be approved tonight. We're approving all staff members as substitute translators and homebound instructors for the upcoming school year. We're approving 2022 summer exam proctors. We're approving use of district facilities by Putnam County Emergency Management Services if needed. We're approving the fall 2022 coaching recommendations. We're amending a probationary term for a teacher with previous tenure. That teacher is Alyssa Himmelfarb, an ENL teacher. Her probationary term will now be three years due to her having tenure in another district. We're approving the enhanced longevity graduate course credits and in-service courses, hours, and credits for staff salary purposes. We're approving disposal or sale of surplus textbooks. We're authorizing the superintendent of schools or the director of business administration to enter into contracts with Altaris, Riker Security, Putnam County regarding COVID testing, and Pitney Bowes for the use of postal meters. We're approving additional hours for various staff members. We're approving unpaid days for a staff member. We're approving the superintendent of schools to attend two conferences. One is the New York State School Superintendent's Fall Leadership Summit, and the second one is the New York State School Board's annual convention. We're amending the Board of Education meeting dates for the 2022-23 school year due to a conflict with the NISBA convention. So the Thursday, October 25th meeting will be held on Tuesday, October, the Tuesday before. That information is already on the website. We are approving the rescinding of our retirement date. We're authorizing the superintendent of schools to enter into an extension contract with Aramark Educational Services for Food Services for the 2022-23 school year. We're approving the various school meal program documents that are required for the upcoming school year, and we're approving the 2022-23 school meal prices, which will be lunch at $2.95 at the high school and middle school. Elementary school lunch will be $2.70. Breakfast is $1.50. The lunch prices are the same as the previous year's prices. Breakfast is increasing by 15 cents. And that's it.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Busy summer. There's a lot going on. Okay, so reports. Dr. Luft, could you give us your report?
I have to take a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Now...
Good evening, everyone. So I want to start my report by recognizing the IB diploma recipients from Putnam Valley High School. I'm proud to announce that each of the students who attempted the diploma received a prerequisite number of points in order to be awarded it. So those IB diploma recipients are Fiona Chen, Rowan Elgendi, Remi Epner, Gabriella Lee, Dominic Mantilla, and Victoria Helen Spitzer. So congratulations to all of them. Also, just as a little look ahead, I know more information will be shared by the high school, but a glimpse at what our IB examination scores were at the high school. Of the 114 high school seniors that completed a second year of IB as a senior, 109 of them scored a four or higher in order to earn the certificate. So I think that's a tremendous accomplishment for our school district. I think it speaks a lot to our program. Many of those students would have previously gone into an elective their senior year, and the fact that they chose to continue for IB class for a second year, take the exam, and hopefully earn the credential is, I think, a huge shout-out to the work of our high school administration and our high school teachers. I want to wish all of the class of 2022, college-bound graduates, success as they leave for college in the next couple of weeks. As all are aware, Dr. Seppi has announced her resignation to pursue principalship in Horace Greeley in the Chapukwa School District, so you wish her well on her new position. Matt Mello will become the interim high school principal for the 22-23 school year. As previously announced, Dr. Latisha Payne will be moving over from the middle school to the high school and will serve as the interim high school assistant principal for the 22-23 school year, and we're currently recruiting for an interim middle school assistant principal for the same year. We held screenings today, more screenings tomorrow, and we hope to have someone in place as soon as possible. Some other summer items. Our external audit took place in July. O'Connor Davies will be presenting to the board in September or October. Some middle years program updates at the middle school. The application process began with a sample application. We're awaiting the official release at the end of September. We've been assigned and met with our IB managers. We're identifying future training needs and working on a collection of resources to be shared with the entire middle school staff. In the elementary school, they're working on adopting a new ELA program. Over 26 teachers came in over the summer for professional development on the new program. We're gonna do a quick pre-K update. You wanna jump in real fast? I asked Ms. Levine to provide a quick update. I'll be the bearer of bad news, and then I'll let her provide some more rationale. Unfortunately, although we met with all of our community partners earlier in, I hope, all the spring, to say that this was something we were going to pursue and hopefully in partnership with them, that is not gonna be a reality for this year, and we've instead changed our focus to next school year. Go ahead.
Sure. So I'll just give a little brief history and then a little bit of the rationale about why we're headed in this direction right now. About a year and a half ago, April or March of so 2021, the state released funding for universal pre-kindergarten, and districts were all allocated a certain amount of funds to use and allowed to apply for those funds to start a pre-K program the following fall. So you can imagine that's already a very tight timeline. You'd have to submit the grant application, put out an RFP if you're participating with other communities, figure out your spacing, hold a lottery for families, and get word out and communication to families. So many districts, including our own, decided that over that brief summer was not the right time to apply. However, the state assured us that a new application would come out the following spring, we'd be able to apply, and we'd be able to put everything in place in the meantime, or at least start having those conversations with our community partners so that we could apply in the spring when the new application came out. Well, unfortunately, that application did not come out until about last week. So that led us to say, this is not the right time to launch a pre-kindergarten program. Even if we did, at best, we'd be able to hold the half-year program, which has to be at least 90 days, 90 school days, in order for it to qualify for the funding. So that would mean an interruption in the school year of other programs already in existence, either students being withdrawn or families in Putnam Valley losing on money that they've already deposited or paid for to have their children in the current programs they would have to start the year in. So we recognized that that was not good for our local community, both on our families and our local businesses, and the last thing we want to do is cause harm to our local community partners by launching a program either rushed and not really well thought out and planned, but also taking away students from their programs or creating a situation where parents have to choose between the decisions they've already made for the year and this other program, for which it would be a lottery anyway, and families who would have to make that decision would be thinking, maybe I'll get it, maybe I won't. So what we do know about this current application is that it is good to, we can apply over this year for next year if we want to. So it's something we'll continue to explore. However, there were things that we read in the new application that conflicted with some information we had about funding previously, the per-child funding. So we have to look into that a little bit more closely with our contact at the state and make sure it's right for Putnam Valley all around, so.
Okay, yeah, the idea sounds good, but there are so many dominoes that fall when you start this process, and there's so many things to consider that it's just not a simple matter of, oh, we're gonna offer universal pre-K. So I appreciate the fact that we're thinking not only of our community, but of our family and of being able to provide the right program, not just a program that fills, you know, that fills a gap. It has to be right for students. And we have great preschools in town already that do a really good job, that coordinate with the school, that reach out to, you know, the district to make sure that what they're doing with their students is preparing them for what they're gonna be asked to do when they come to kindergarten. So, you know, I appreciate all the work that, and I'm sorry that it's late, but it sounds like the state, so.
If I can ask a question. Did the state explain the delay in the application process? It just...
It did not. We just followed up a couple of times. They said, "Not yet."
It has something to do with, although the state budget is passed, the budget department has to appropriate the funds according to how it was sort of laid out, and that's what, apparently, until the budgeting department appropriates the funds into that budget line, they can't expend those funds, and I guess that's what they used to release the application. And for whatever reason, he had warned us when we spoke. We followed up late in the spring. We were like, we're waiting for this. We need this. And he's like, well, it typically comes out late spring, early summer. By the time the Office of Budgeting allocates those funds for this program, and for whatever reason, this year it didn't happen until after August. To Ms. Levine's point, it's a very delicate balance we're trying to find between the needs of our families, the needs of our local service providers, right? The last thing we want to do is put a local business out of business. We don't want to upend people's plans at the end of the summer. We want to make sure that it is truly a lottery system, and everyone in town has equal opportunity to apply, so there's a lot of communication and information that we have to get out to make sure everyone's aware of this opportunity. So it just would be too rushed, and it would be bad for families, bad for students that are upended, bad for our community partners. So it's something that really has to be done thoughtfully and in a timely manner. So we're hopeful to apply now for next year, and then that'll give us time to do the response for proposal, to work with our community partners, to communicate.
No, I agree with everything you said. I'm just disappointed in the state. They introduce a, you know, a project that is going to have a lot of community support, and then at the last minute, they just don't prepare properly for it. Which is a disappointment.
Right. The other thing is, there seems to be some discrepancy in the amount of funding they'll provide on a per-pupil basis, and that's, I mean, a real issue for our community partners, whether or not they can afford to partner with us to run this program based upon the amount of money they're able to receive. They're not able to charge the families any additional amount. So whatever the state provides per child, that's all they can collect for those hours. They can do pre-care or post-care, but during those pre-K hours, they can't charge anymore, and there's questions as to whether or not it's economically feasible in this part of the state to run a program at the per-pupil expense reimbursement that they would receive for...
Which is probably less than what they already charge for their current pre-K, right? Significantly.
I mean, not knowing, but I would wager a guess that that is accurate.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're not done yet?
Sorry.
We interrupted you. You took sidebar.
So each of our buildings is running a variety of summer enrichment and boost programs, similar to last summer, so those continue. We ran some test prep programs, preparing students for the August regents. We did a credit recovery program for students in our middle school Spanish program. So those are all underway and have thus far been really successful. Just some, a look forward at some upcoming events. We have our kinder camp starting August 22nd to 24th, our kindergarten bus run August 25th, new teacher orientation August 22nd to 24th, admin and board retreats on August 23rd, sheriff's department school update August 24th. If anybody hasn't figured it out yet, that's a pretty busy week. It's all the same week. Be on the lookout for district newsletters. That'll be mailed out to the community throughout the upcoming school year. And then just a quick update on a couple of things. Our summer projects, our middle school bathroom renovations, we are nearing completion, so we are pretty confident they'll be totally complete and ready when students return to the middle school in the beginning of September, so that will be nice. Our elementary school outdoor classroom had a redesign thanks to our buildings and ground staff. Been out there working on it. We anticipate ceiling and striping of our middle school parking lot. I think that's also scheduled for the weekend, everything else is happening. We, our grounds guys painted the modular building behind the elementary school, so we've done some work to get that building back up to spec and ready to occupy whoever moves into there. So it's now newly painted. It matches the fourth grade wing, and once the windows and doors are done, it'll be ready to go. Quickly thank our technology department. They've done tremendous upgrades and installations. They've been moving interactive displays all over the campus here, mounting new ones, moving old ones to make sure that the teachers have access to the same device regardless of which classroom they're going into at each building. And obviously, our building staff for the tremendous work they do each summer in cleaning these buildings and getting them ready to welcome students back. Some upcoming projects that will begin in this fall. We have a new outdoor classroom going into the elementary school courtyard. We have the seating wall here at the high school, and we have doors and windows going into elementary school modular buildings. So those projects will begin, in all likelihood, sometime in the fall. Just a quick reminder regarding the opening day of school. So August 30th and 31st will be our two superintendent's conference days. Schools open to students on September 1st. The high school will welcome ninth and 10th graders on the first, and then 11th and 12th graders only on the second. So staggered start at the high school. Nine, 10 the first day, 11, 12 the second. Middle school will have a similar staggered start with only five, six the first day, but then welcoming all students back five through eight the second day on September 2nd. And elementary school will welcome all grades back beginning September 1st, and the caveat there is some of the kindergarten classes will be split. So some of the kindergarten classes, half the students will show the first day, the other half will come the second day, and then right after Labor Day, they would start their full classes. I know there's one exception, and the teacher will communicate with their parents in that case, but we thought it was a great way to, we wanted kindergartners to experience the entire day. So I didn't want to split like an AM group and a PM group because I want a kindergartner to get used to arrival, to get used to dismissal, to get used to lunch, and you miss a lot of those opportunities in a half-day. But I also wanted to give the teachers the ability to work with really small groups of students, to provide a really individualized attention, and to really get the students comfortable in being in their classrooms. So that was the decision that we reached, to split those classes and allow half the students each day to come for the entire day, to get them used to the processes after Labor Day, then we're back to normal. That's it. Questions?
The outdoor classroom, is that the one just up on the bank?
Yep, so the outdoor classroom outside of the kindergarten wing?
Right.
Up there, so that...
So they, like, what are they doing?
So the benches were rotting, so we replaced all the benches. We cut back some of the, we, I wasn't out there. I would have much rather been out there. The guys cut back some of the brush and opened up that space. If you remember, when you walked outside of the kindergarten wing, there was like a wall of bushes and weeds and stuff like that. We tore all of that out, put a couple nice little grasses. Opens up the space much more, I think it's much more inviting and friendly. It's not sort of hidden back there so much anymore, and we just hope it'll increase the usage of that space. The other space, originally, we were looking outside of the first grade wing. Now, we've done work out there, too. We built a fence. We removed some trees, so that's actually a more welcoming outdoor learning space as well. There's some furniture out there, but the real work's gonna happen in the courtyard, similar to what we did here at the high school. We had a very underutilized courtyard, did some work to it, and now it's one of the most popular spaces in the school. We're hopeful the elementary school, the same case, right? There's a beautiful courtyard in the center there, rarely used during the school year, and we hope to revamp that space to make it more inviting and more friendly for teachers to bring their classes outside and to use that space. The nice part of the elementary school, it's a very self-contained space, so it's fenced off on one side, buildings on the other, so it's an easy space to monitor children in. Go ahead.
I'll just jump in on two things, give the board an update. One, as you heard me talk about Cove Care and them providing counseling services to only Putnam Valley students, K through, grades K through 12, so that's moving along in the process. I'm hoping that OMH, which is the Office of Mental Health, will give their stamp of approval within the next few weeks. They were here last week to look at the space, to discuss all of the procedures.
So they're coming here?
So from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM in the evening, two days a week. We'll start with two days a week and see how it goes, just for Putnam Valley students having in-person access to counseling here at the school, you know, in a private, you know, in a private office space and a conference room here. So I think it's a great opportunity for our community. A lot of our middle and high schoolers can just walk right over after school. They don't, and they can take the late buses home. Obviously, elementary parents would need to stay here, so I think it's just easy access. You know, as many of you know, getting from Putnam Valley to any kind of services is difficult. Yeah, White Plains, Carmel, Brewster, so really opening that up here and trying to expand it over time will, I think, will benefit our community greatly.
But this is make an appointment. You have an appointment, it's not walk-in.
This is make an appointment. We'll make a lot of the referrals. Our school clinicians will make those referrals along with parents. It's billed privately. It really is about them using our space to service children. That's one thing. And then the second thing is, our extended school year program ends tomorrow. They, I think that the kids had a great summer. ESY is really available for students who have significant disabilities and need support over the summer in order to continue their educational progress. So Ms. Boyle, Ms. Lewis, Ms. Shalub, and Ms. Mahoney and Ms. McCarty all taught this summer and ran some great academic programs, and then in there, we put in some nice trips for the kids for experiential learning and really getting out into our community, whether that's shopping or ordering at a diner or, you know, going to a farm, just different kinds of things. But I have to give a huge shout-out to the Putnam Valley Fire Department. Every year, I think, kids all the way through high school talk about, like, their memories of the fire truck coming to the back of the elementary school, and they spray the water on them, and they just think it is like the best thing ever, and they are so excited, and they know it's coming, and the anticipation, and what day is it? What day is it? Is it almost that day? So I just give a huge shout-out to our community partners. They really do such a great job and let the kids sort of explore the fire truck and the hose and the water and how it works and all of that, so I really appreciate it.
Ages on the extended school year?
So they do kindergarten. We do kindergarten through age, up to age 18, sometimes even older. This year, it was kindergarten through 10th grade.
Like, about how many students?
So about, between 45 and 55 students.
Wow, that's great.
At any given time, yeah.
That's excellent. Excellent. Okay.
Dr. Luft, on the, on the middle school restrooms, is that, I'm trying to remember now, I don't remember the details. Is it, are all bathrooms in that building now renovated?
Correct, yep.
Every, this is the last of it?
It's the last bunch.
So all the bathrooms will not be what they were?
There'll be none left. No more originals.
No more closets as big.
No more closets.
I say that, I think there might be one down by the loading dock, which is still original. We wanted to keep one for like, you know, nostalgia, nostalgia.
Like a time capsule.
Yeah.
A time capsule is right. And it has no walls.
It's an adult bathroom, so.
Okay, Helen, good? Any, no questions? Okay. So we're gonna move to new business. Resolution one, please.
Resolved on the recommendation, superintendent of schools to appoint Alexandra Gazola to a four-year probationary term as an art teacher commencing on September 1st, 2022, terminating on August 31st, 2026, in the tenure area of art at the middle school on step four BA of the PVFT salary schedule. Mrs. Gazola holds visual arts initial certification. In order to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said employee must receive at least three AVBR ratings of effective or highly effective during the four-year probationary term and may not receive an ineffective rating in the final year of probation.
Second.
Questions or comments?
So Ms. Gazola's been at the district for the past three years in various part-time positions, .8, .9. So this is the first year in which she is a full-time teacher based upon the needs for art in that building. So that's the reason for this appointment is after being here for three years, she's finally in a full-time appointment, so will begin her receiving seniority towards tenure in art.
Well, why September 1st? Because I know they're starting earlier than that.
September 1st is the first day of students.
Oh, okay, okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number two, please.
And this is appointing a teaching assistant resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Rebecca Cassidy to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on September 1st, 2022, and terminating on August 31st, 2026, in the teaching assistant tenure area on step two of the CSEA salary schedule. And in accordance with PVCSD policy 9250, Ms. Cassidy holds teaching assistant level one certification.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board appoints Melissa Clements to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing September 1st of 2022 and terminating on August 31st of 2026 in the teaching assistant tenure area on step two of the CSEA salary schedule. And in accordance of Putnam Valley Central School District policy 9250, Ms. Clements holds teaching assistant level one certification.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I just want to point out that both Rebecca and Melissa started last school year, which is why they're now moving up to step two. So they didn't start the school year, but they were hired during the school year to fill other vacancies, so this is their first year, full-year appointment.
Got it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation, the superintendent of schools, the board appoint Desiree Turtinwall to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on September 1st, 2022, and terminating on August 31st, 2026, in the teaching assistant tenure area on step one of the CSA salary schedule in accordance with PVCSD policy 9250. on step one of the CSA salary schedule. And in accordance with PVCSD policy ninety-two fifty, Ms. Turtinwall holds teaching assistant level three certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? How many levels are there for teaching assistants?
Three.
Three? Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that the board appoint Roselia Patichi to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on September first, twenty twenty-two and terminating on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, in the teaching assistant tenure area on step two of the CSEA salary schedule. And in accordance with PVCSD policy ninety-two fifty, Ms. Patichi holds teaching assistant level one certification.
Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number six, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Putnam Valley High School Principal, Dr. Sandra Seppi, from the district effective August twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-two as per document number sixty-three over twenty-three attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
With regret, deep regret.
Just gonna say, I just wanna thank Dr. Seppi for her years of service and for the many, many tremendous accomplishments uh, that have taken place at the high school during her tenure, and wish her the best in future endeavors. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number seven, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint a leave of absence for Matthew Mello from his position as assistant principal at Putnam Valley High School from August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three per document number sixty-five twenty-three attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting. And appoint Mr. Mello as interim high school principal effective August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two through June thirty, twenty twenty-three at a salary of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the school year.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just wanna point out for the next three items, or next two items, sorry. The timing of Dr. Seppi's departure really left the district in a position where, um, it made most sense to move forward with interim positions. So each of these interim positions is a year-long appointment. Each of the individuals that are taking them, uh, would automatically fall back to their previous role, uh, unless a new offer is made. So there's been questions about what the process will be moving forward and why we didn't have a full interview process now. And all of that will be worked out as we move forward through the year. But the timing was all about putting the best people in the best positions to keep the great work that's going on here in Putnam Valley moving forward. And I think we're lucky to have talented staff in district, and I think that those talented staff members will do the best, um, do better than anyone we bring in from the outside at this point in time to continue moving our buildings forward. So ultimately, that was the decision that was made by myself and supported by the Board of Education. And I wish them, I have great confidence in my colleagues, and we'll see how this year goes. And ultimately, permanent appointments will have to be made to any vacant position, uh, in the future.
Other comments? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number eight, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a leave of absence for Dr. Latisha Payne from her position as assistant principal at Putnam Valley Middle School from August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three as per document sixty-seven dash twenty-three attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting. And appoint Dr. Payne as interim high school assistant principal effective, uh, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number nine, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of teaching assistant Lindsay Edwards from the district effective July eighteenth of twenty twenty-two as per document number forty-nine slash twenty-three attached to the agenda and official minutes of the meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number ten, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of teaching assistant Michael Rufo from the district effective August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two as per document number fifty-nine twenty-three attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number eleven, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of bus driver Jeanette Rain from the district effective August first, twenty twenty-two as per document sixty dash, uh, twenty-three attached to the agenda and official meetings, uh, minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? I will miss her smiling face and waving hands. Um, she's, uh, you know, I know she welcomed, um, her students on her bus, and, um, I know they'll miss her, too. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number twelve, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to amend the effective start date and probationary term for Judalisa Perez as a social worker approved to the Board of Education, at the Board of Education business meeting July first of twenty twenty-two to a three-year probationary term effective September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two and terminating on September fourteenth of twenty twenty-five in the tenure area of social work at the high school.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number thirteen, please.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the terms of a supplemental memorandum of agreement dated July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two between the district and the Civil Service Employees Association as presented to the board at this meeting as document number fifty-five twenty-three.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number fourteen, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a Spanish checkpoint A program for middle school students from July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two to August fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Questions or comments? How many students are doing this, Dr. Loft?
Uh, I don't know the total number of students off the top of my head. I do know that four students who had, um, not been successful on the exam in the end of June, uh, retook the exam in August after completing this course and not only passed, passed with scores in the nineties, high eighties. Um, so I think it's a, a huge accomplishment. Um, it's a, Justine Trainor's a brand-new teacher to us last year. She came in during the school year. She's an experienced teacher, but new to Putnam Valley. And she obviously did a tremendous job for these students, uh, in order to get them, uh, through the course material, prepared for the exam, and, uh, to do so well in the exam, hence preventing these students from having to repeat the course and the exam at the high school next year. So, um, kudos to her and for the students and their parents who had them, uh, commit to coming to school to avoid having to retake that course. So, um, I'm thankful it worked out. I'm thankful we were able to get, uh, these four students through. I wish more had taken advantage of the opportunity, but, um, the four students, it's a great accomplishment, so.
Great, thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number fifteen, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the twenty-twenty-two, the twenty-twenty-three emergency management safety plans for the high school, middle school, elementary school, and district. Document fifteen, fifty-one over twenty-three attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number sixteen, please.
Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the bid from Parodi, Parati Corp., the low bidder for the twenty-twenty-one COVID-related capital projects as per document number sixty-four twenty-three attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
So many of these projects are the projects we've been discussing over the past several months. Several of them are supportive as the COVID, uh, federal stimulus funds. Uh, these include, uh, the outdoor classroom space at the elementary school, the, the wall here in the courtyard at the high school, storage space in the transportation building so we can move the files out of the modular building. It includes funding for the doors and windows in the modular building to replace those. Um, that's pretty much it off the top of my head. Those are the, 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 the projects that we've discussed throughout the spring, uh, needing to take place. We went through the bid process. Parati was the lowest bidder, so now we're awarding the bid to that company so that the work can be scheduled to begin. Just, it's nothing new.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. At number seventeen, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that school taxes be extended against the taxable property of the towns of Putnam Valley, Carmel, and Cortland as appears on a tax list hereby are levied. And be it further resolved that this board executes warrants on August eleventh, twenty twenty-two for each of the towns. For the town of Putnam Valley to be effective September first, twenty twenty-two in the amount of, uh, thirty-five million, fifty-five dollars, ninety, uh, and nine hundred and seventy-one less star as per document seventy-one twenty-three attached to the official minutes of this meeting on file in the district office. The town of Carmel to be effective September first, twenty twenty-two in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand, three oh nine, less star as per document, uh, where are we? Seventy-three twenty-three attached to the official minutes of this meeting on file in the district office, and the town, and the town of Cortland to be effective September first, twenty twenty-two in the amount of four million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five seventy-nine, less star as per document seventy-three twenty-three attached to the official minutes of this meeting on file in the district office. And that these warrants be for the portion of the district lying in the towns of Putnam Valley, Carmel, and Cortland, and the collection period ends October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. That said warrants be delivered to the tax collector of Cortland and Putnam Valley, and be it further resolved that the collector may make no changes or alterations in the warrant or rules except as provided in sections five fifty-one through five fifty-eight of the real property tax law and shall issue tax statements and make collections pursuant to the applicable provisions of the real property tax law.
Deep breath. Second. Questions or comments? Jill, I know you did a lot of work to get this done, so, um, congratulations.
With, uh, it was done a little earlier than we usually do, so.
But it didn't get done earlier by accident. It got done earlier due to the hard work, so I appreciate it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Okay, September means, I can't believe we're planning September meetings already.
We're there. So our first two meetings of the school year will be September eighth and September twenty-second. And obviously, those agendas will be made available, uh, as soon as they are ready, and we'll begin to rescheduling, uh, presentations. So I know we have a couple from last school year that we wanted to get in early this year, and then before you know it, we'll be on to the building updates around the beginning of the school year.
Okay. Exciting. Uh, public comment on any topic, but there's no public here. So board member comments? Okay, so.
Hold on, I have one.
What?
Am I allowed to talk here?
You are.
Okay. Uh, I just wanted to share with, well, the board and everyone, something that the district is gonna begin exploring the feasibility of. So in terms of maintaining our facilities and, um, our operating costs and all of those things, uh, there are a couple projects that, at this point, we're just exploring the feasibility of around the campus. But I did wanna take this opportunity to share it, is, uh, some of the things that we're looking at. The first being, uh, the retention wall in the high school parking lot. So I'm gonna invite the board members after this, uh, meeting to take a stroll out there and to, uh, just take a look at that wall and the condition of said wall. It's, it's becoming concerning, to say the least.
His favorite board member is he's gonna put in the front?
The least favorite he puts on, stand on top of it. So that's something that I'm working with our architects to explore, uh, the feasibility of, uh, replacing that wall. Also, for anyone who's picked up students in the middle school parking lot, um, it can be a slightly terrifying experience. Uh, there are no crosswalks, there's no sidewalks, there's no, um, way to divide traffic. It is really a chaotic and, what I would say, dangerous environment for students at the end of school. Middle school students are, um, they're old enough to leave to go to their parents' cars. Uh, the parents, it's not like the elementary school where they're coming in and holding their hand and walking across there. And I am fearful, uh, along with many others, that, um, it, it could result in, in something bad happening. So that's something that I know Mr. Spittle and Mr. McCarty have been talking about, and something that I wanna seriously take a look at, ways to improve the middle school parking lot, uh, in terms of lighting, in terms of safety, crosswalks, sidewalks, making it as similar to how the middle, the high school side of the parking lot functions is something that I seriously wanna consider. The last thing, uh, on my list, again, that I'm working with the architects on, is I wanna explore expansion of the geothermal wells at the elementary school. Uh, we're fortunate where the middle school, high school campus uses zero gallons of oil to heat or cool our buildings. And I think, um, in a sustainability standpoint, in a global warming standpoint, uh, there's lots of benefits of which having that. We were able to do an EPC at our elementary school several years ago. About two-thirds of that building now operates on the geothermal. But with the price of oil, and who knows how high it'll go this winter, uh, but if summer's gas prices have anything to do with it, it's gonna be concerning. Our boiler system in the elementary school is nearing its end of life, so the district would be looking at a significant investment to replace those boilers anyway. Uh, so I think it's, now is the time to explore the feasibility of adding additional wells onto the top field and being able to move the elementary school to entirely geothermal like the middle school and the high school would. That would eliminate any district use of fossil fuels, or at least oil for heating. And, uh, I think would better position us for much-term, more long-term savings and spare us the expensive needing to replace the boilers in the basement. Now economically, whether that's all feasible, we don't know yet. Obviously, all of that work will happen. It will all be shared with the community. Uh, there'll be lots of opportunity for community feedback, but I did wanna take this opportunity to announce because we are, um, I, we'll be asking the board to sort of sign off on a contract with the architects to develop the, those work, at least the preliminary budgeting work, and then have conversations as to what's feasible and what's not, and what's best suited for our school district, our community, and our students.
Do we still have any of the, um, COVID money left for any of these projects?
No. I mean, we have money left, but money that's been allocated for other expenses over the last couple of years.
Yeah, yeah, just, yep.
These will unfortunately be bigger ticket items than we can afford with the COVID money. Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, so a couple of things. Um, the, one of the, I would say, big mucky mucks from NISBA, New York State School Boards Association, um, called and scheduled a Zoom conference with me. Um, Mr. Ant Whistle, um, we had a really nice conversation. He really wanted me to say two things. Based on his observance of our board meetings, um, on, which he watched on, um, the, on, off of our website. First, he loved Mrs. Bellino's, um, expo, first of all, the placement of the, um, you know, thing we do first, help me.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, thank you. Where it was placed, and then how it was, each item was explained. He said, "Other districts have thoroughly struggled." Um, and he recommends all of them to go and watch ours, um, because he thinks it was really incredibly well done. It's thorough. It's, it's enough information without having to stop and talk about it, but the, it, there was transparent. there was transparency. All in all, he said, you know, congratulations. He thought that was great. So thank you, Mrs. Bellino. His other really thing, he was so, so impressed with Dan's videography. He said, you know, he said, truly, I watch other board meetings, and you have this little tiny picture of the board members that are all about that big, and you can't tell who's talking. You can't tell what's going on. He said, this is so professionally done. You know, he comes in on the people that are speaking or on the, whatever's being shown if we're getting a presentation. He said, again, he's told people, you know, first of all, it's clear that you have a dedicated person. It's not just like, you know, oh, who's free? Could you set up? So he wanted to say congratulations to Putnam Valley and also kudos to Dan for excellent work. I wanted to mention that Joe and I both took the Summer Law Conference, which was over two days. I'm amazed every year when I take the conference at how much changes in the law in a year. You know, it seems to me it like should be like three years, but good advice, good discussions. Joe sent out the pages to all the other board members so they could look at them, and I sent my questions or things that sparked my interest. So I think that that was really good, and I think that that helps the board a lot. I'm going tomorrow at 5:30 in the morning to drive to Albany to attend this Leadership in Education event.
It looks like a great event.
Yeah. It's two days. I'm really only going to go one, because I just can't do two. But, you know, the courses that I'm taking are the critical role of school board, that school boards play in promoting democracy, running an effective and civil meeting, which also Mr. Ant Whistle said, you know, congratulations, you know, he felt it between the board and Dr. Luff, that our meetings, even when people disagreed, it was as polite as you could be in that kind of hyper situation. Anyway, building unity for successful governance, and best practices for building constructive community engagement. So hopefully I'll learn, get some good ideas, and I can bring them back to you. I also, part of the Lower Hudson Education Council, who does advocacy work for us. I'm now on the council, and so they said, we know that everybody on the council can't make every meeting, but, you know, if you make as many as you can, we like to have people from all over. So I attended my first meeting Wednesday night, or Wednesday afternoon. It was really nice. We met with the legislate later, or her staff. We went through the topics that are most concerning to NISBA, things that they're hoping that she will work on. She was from upstate, so less impactful, but they did want to hear what was happening downstate. So all in all, it was, it was good and informative. So hopefully we will continue to advocate for students and school districts so that we can do the best job we can. So.
And you're going to Syracuse in October, and Dr. Luff you're going as well? Anybody else?
Jackie's presenting.
Jackie's presenting.
Yeah. I'm going to go to hers.
Hoping for eighty-five and sunny.
Huh?
Said I'm hoping for eighty-five and sunny.
In late October, in Syracuse?
In Syracuse.
Crush my hopes.
Keep bringing your colo.
Global warming. No, 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 no. Global warming.
I spent 10 years going to Rochester in November. I never once saw the sun. 10 years, never once. Rain, sleet, snow, hail, fog. I saw all those, never sun.
So, and I know, Sam, that you've been involved in a lot of education, self-education, as well as things presented by West Putt and NISBA over the summer.
I took the law conference also, but I did the webinar.
So were you, were you amazed, impressed?
I, I was perplexed by some of the decisions that the state ed has made on a few of the cases that came before, yeah. But, you know, it was very informative.
I like it when Jay Verona always says, now, the goal is that next year, your district is not part of these examples.
Exactly, yeah.
The goal is to not mention your district next year. You know, so I think that's always, it's always clever when he says that. It always makes me laugh.
Speaking of NISBA, though, just for the public, as you know, we started to look at, we're going to start to do some policy revision, yes, so in the fall. So I think we'll look at Series 4001st, that's curriculum and instruction, so we'll.
Just a tiny little one.
Just the tiny, yeah, it's the biggest one, basically. So I think we have to sort of hammer out how we're going to engage the community, what those meetings look like, how we want to break it up, and how long we want to take to do that.
Now, are you gonna have community members?
We will. We'll invite our community members. We will have various stakeholders in the community to give input. I think the biggest takeaway will be that policy is for, it's broad strokes, right? It's not, you don't want policy that prescribes every detail.
It's not practice.
Exactly. And a lot of our guidance comes from NISBA. So they will, based on state regulation and state laws. So we'll use their policy, a lot of their policy recommendations to guide our work.
And I think two board members have offered to be on that committee, so, you know, it'll be good to have, you know, then they can report in, you know, to what they're doing.
So our public service announcement is if there's any community members out there who love reading educational policy, reach on out, because we need a couple people to join our committee.
I'm not sure how.
It's more than a few pages, by the way.
It'll be a meaningful commitment. Meaningful, timely commitment.
But it has to be done, so.
It does have to be.
And we want people who, you know, want to have a say, so it'll be good. Okay, and Natalie and I talked about this before COVID. We said, okay, this is the year. We're going to start on the policy revisions, and then.
COVID hit.
COVID hit, and then, so we're still, so now.
Drowning in COVID.
We are going to start the policy revisions. Excellent, excellent. I'm glad.
And we've done some, as necessary, we've done policy updates throughout the past couple of years, but really this is more of a global.
And you went through just before that and like fixed all the.
Correct.
Adjectives and.
A lot of the policy, yeah, a lot of the wording.
The other thing, and I forgot to mention, I wanted to say to Jackie, I was so impressed with your curriculum newsletter, like, really. And I hope the community reads it. I hope the teachers do. I just, like, it was so clear and really identified all the things that we were going to work on. It's like, oh, I want to take that class. Oh, I want to do that. Oh, I can't do that. Darn. Can you have that teacher present at the board meeting so I can get a little bit of what's happening in that class? Because I think that that kind of like ongoing learning is just so exciting. So it was really, it was, you know, not only nice to look at, but had a lot of really great information. So, thank you.
And Dr. Luff already, I think, mentioned it, but I think by fast, our next meeting, which is not actually a meeting, the 23rd, is a retreat where we will, again, work to develop as a board some ideas of planning and process. We will have people that, we had a retreat with last year, come back. They're going to know how we operated, interacted, and be able to take us to the next step in, in our development so that we're constantly learning about us as a board, as well as what's going on out in the world that we need to worry about.
All right, so you have two consultants coming in. One is a former board member, long-serving board member, and one is a former long-serving superintendent. So this is their team, the same team we worked with last year. And just so I don't get any email complaints tomorrow, we are retreating all the way to the middle school library.
Fantastic.
The middle school library.
Middle school library.
Not the high school library.
We will not be on the beach.
Right, there's no cruise.
In a retreat environment. We'll be at the middle school library.
Middle school library.
Which is a retreat environment. It's really nice.
It's not the way other people think of retreats. We're not going to Bermuda. Or Syracuse.
Or Syracuse. In October. Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'd like to have a motion to adjourn the business meeting, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you on September 8th at our next board meeting, and have a great end of school, you know, as people wind up this year. School shopping, yay!
That's your Labor Day.
Good night.